...from Bernadette. So I am going to turn my microphone on. And I'm going to come around to the front and make a couple of presentations real quick. You know, it's a... These nights are pretty special, especially when we're honoring young people. And it makes it even more special when we realize that we've got some really special young people in our city. And so I want to... A couple of weeks ago, we did... We had three North Rock High students that were going to Military Academy, and we honored them. We have yet another one that's here tonight that spent the last year at Arkansas Tech, and then was accepted to the Military Academy, and we're certainly proud of him. So I want to read you just a little bit about Jonathan David Dial. He's the son of Lydia and Jonathan Dial. And he's been appointed to the Class of 2017, the United States Military Academy at West Point. It's pretty cool. Jonathan graduated from North Rock High in May of 2012, where he commanded the Junior ROTC Battalion, and personally led the Raider and PT Teams. He was also a varsity swimmer. He was all regional. He was all state. He's a four-year ROTC Scholarship candidate at Arkansas Tech, which he's now leaving and going to West Point. Last year, he served as Paint Hall President on the RA Resident Hall Association, and we are certainly very proud of him. His father is military retired, and his mama is a kindergarten teacher at Park... at Meadow Park Elementary School, which is one of North Rock's schools. So, you know, what a great family for North Little Rock. Jonathan, he'll come up. Certainly want to make this a special day. We don't want to name you Laura Lee Turner Day, so we'll do this one. Greetings, be it known to all that I, Joe Smith, Mayor of North Little Rock, Arkansas, do hereby proclaim this 28th Day of May, 2013, the Johnson David Dial Jr. Day, in honor of his appointment to the Class of 2017 for the United States Military Academy, signed by me and by Diane Whitby, our City Clerk. We are so very, very proud of you. Thank you.
Mayor, may I add that Mr. Dial, Mr. Jonathan Dial Jr., there is one of the lifeguards at the Old Rook Swimming Pool, which you're a member of, so.
Oh, really? Well, good. Well, I like that.
He'd be looking out for your grandkids.
Are you going to do it this summer? All right. Well, you see two little bitty redheads running around. You watch them, because they're mine. You know, Jonathan, you know, the service that you're getting ready to do, and the service that your dad did, it's really special to all of us, and we want to make sure that you know that all the citizens of North Little Rock are very proud of you, and very proud of what you're getting ready to enter into. So, thank you. Now, you know, it's fun, again, when we have a young lady that's really excelled, and it makes it special when her mom and dad are friends of mine. And so Laura Lee, if you'd come up just for a minute, I want to give you all the camera time that I can, because you certainly are a very gorgeous young woman. They... Now, this is kind of special, because she won the Miss Arkansas Outstanding Teen Pageant, but she just didn't win part of it. She won most everything. You've Got to Look Photogenic Award, Most Talented Dancer Award, Overall Evening Wear Award, Sloan Roberts Overall Physical Fitness in Sportswear Award, Overall Talent Award, Overall Private Interview Award. Talent Evening Wear. Is... Was there any section that you didn't win? No? Well, we're very, very proud of you. You know, I don't think that we've had a Miss Arkansas from North Little Rock since Sharon Ann Evans' bail. Maybe it might have been the last time, and that was when I was about your age. So we're expecting you to continue forward.
Long time.
All this training that you're getting, and you... We want you to come back. Next time I'm in here, I want to be saying that you're Miss Arkansas. Okay? You going to work that hard for me? So I'm going to do the same thing, and the City Council, of course, is part of this presentation along with me, that we bring greetings that, on this 28th Day of May, we're going to call it Laura Lee Turner Day, in honor of being crowned 2012 Miss Arkansas Outstanding Teen, signed by Ms. Whitby and me. And we're so proud of you. Laura Lee's parents are Jenny Turner and Tab Turner, and her grandmother's my next-door neighbor, so it's really kind of special. So we're very proud. Okay. I am getting ready to introduce Bernadette, who is our Fit to Live Coordinator, and she's got a PowerPoint and do some really special presentations, so I'm going to sit down and be quiet, okay?
Good evening, everyone. Thanks for allowing us to do this brief presentation. I just wanted to take this opportunity, as our Arkansas Garden Corps members, Harmony, Hudson, and Andrew Cardy, are slowly transitioning out of their year of service, and with the exponential growth that we've had in our community gardens in the past two years, to highlight those projects and highlight the people behind them. So you'll also see a young gentleman here, Josh Finley. And Josh is President of the People Tree, which is involved in a great deal, number of the community garden projects that we'll be highlighting. We're going to keep it short, a little bit of information on each garden, so in case you haven't done the full garden tour of North Little Rock, you'll get a little snapshot tonight. So with that being said, I also want to introduce Mr. Blake Wyndorf from Central Arkansas Water, and we'll be thanking him for the service and talking a little bit more about what Central Arkansas Water has contributed to the garden project. So with that, I'll hand it over to Andrew and Harmony.
Okay. So can we go to the next slide? Okay. So, city funding, since 2011, over $77,000 has been allocated for all of the gardens. And we've grown a lot. In 2011, there was just one community garden. 2012, there were 13 community gardens, and this year, we have 19 community gardens. And then we're also affiliated with Arkansas Garden Corps, and that's a part of AmeriCorps. And so Andrew and I are both Arkansas Garden Corps members. For the next one. Okay. So all the gardens are really different. They have a lot of different purposes. A lot of it is for food security, but it's also city beautification and education. So the demographics of the gardens are all different, too. They're all different ages, genders, income levels, and ethnicities. Some of them are communal gardens. Some of them have individual plots. And then, as you'll see, the designs are all different, too. So we have 19 community gardens. Three are employee gardens. Those are all new. We work in two high school gardens, one elementary school garden, three church-based gardens, two nonprofit farms, and then eight other neighborhood gardens. So this is the code enforcement garden. This is our newest garden, and it's, as you can see, it's not quite done yet. We're building it right now. But it's kind of funny, because Tom Wadley came to us and said that he wanted to have a vegetable garden, so his employees could have, like, healthier lunches. They could pick salads, and pick cucumbers and tomatoes and stuff for their lunch. So they have two little community plots that are at the... You can see they're at the code enforcement building. City Services Employee Garden, it's on the balcony, the third floor of City Services, and Jennifer Johansson is the garden manager there. So that's Jennifer in the corner there watering some plants. And they have a couple of employees that are also using it as kind of a lunch garden. The Parks and Recreation Employee Garden, they have... They have two main beds. You can see in the upper right-hand corner, it's kind of a square bed with some pretty traditional rows, and then they have a circular bed. So it's pretty new. It was installed in the last two months. And there are about four to six people that work in it, but it's mostly Jennifer Faulner and Kenny Johnson.
And I'll just interject that when you see compost from American... From AC, it means American Composting. So we also wanted to recognize the gardens that have received free compost through our agreement with the city and American Composting.
Pretty much all of the gardens have received compost from American Composting. Oh, thanks. So the... Oh, go back. Okay. This is one of the newer ones we work in. It's Crestwood Elementary. So I go every Monday and work in an after-school club with kids there. And it's pretty small, but it's really fun, and there are eight to 15 kids that work in it. And they're also trying to do a farmer's market next year there. So they're definitely expanding their garden. North Little Rock Community Farm. This one was initiated by the People Tree, which Josh Finley is the President of the People Tree. Do you want to talk a little bit about it?
Sure. So the People Tree started this with the East Initiative out of the East Campus with KJ Kite and about 12 different students that range from ninth grade to 12th grade. And their agenda is to build a school farm, but to use it as a template that can be used at all the different other locations for the schools as well. So as the schools are renovated or built, then they hope to actually help the people and the students in those schools build out individualized school farms or gardens, excuse me, according to their own desires and wishes.
So North Little Rock Academy is another one. It's not really a farm yet, but they do have this really beautiful greenhouse, and Andrew has been teaching some garden-based education classes to them this semester. Argenta Commu... Oh, that's a really cute picture. Okay. Argenta Community Garden, you guys have probably all seen that. It's right beside the Junior League House in Argenta, and it's really lovely. It's a great group of people, 10 to 20 people, that live in the neighborhood, and they have communal plots there. Argenta Vegetable Garden is... Was also initiated by the People Tree, and it's pretty much right across the street from Argenta Community Garden. Do you want to say a few words about each one of the People Tree?
Now, just that this one was the... This one was the very first garden that we started here to be as a model for the rest of these community gardens. And we knew that when we started this, it was a generous donation from John Godan and Greg Nabholz and Harold Tenenbaum that we could use this land. And it's really nice to see that it's, you know, sprouted 13 to 19 other gardens now. But this will be its last year, because development moves along, and we're going to be finding another location to do that. But stop by and see it, because it will not be there any longer after this year.
Vestal Urban Farm. Vestal Urban Farm is at Vestal Park. It's right across the street from Boone Park Elementary. So we have a lot of community volunteers that come on the Community Volunteer Days, and they're really different people. Some people from the Bering Cross neighborhood, and some people from Little Rock, and then a lot of students, too. So Andrew and I taught classes this year at Boone Park Elementary, and we taught a few classes in the garden. So there are, yeah, just a wide variety of people that come and work on this one. And this is... It's a nonprofit farm. It's about two acres, and they have a really grand plan for what it's going to look like in the future. So The Field is our other really big one. It's also a nonprofit farm, and it was also initiated by the People Tree and The One Inc. And it has a... Well, Vestal Urban Farm, to go back, Vestal has a focus on youth entrepreneurship, and The Field's focus is on feeding the homeless population of central Arkansas. Grow Levy Community Garden. This one is in the Levy neighborhood. So it was started by Adam and Laura Hicks with a partnership with the Neighbors United for Levy. They have five to 20 people that work there. They have some individual plots and some communal plots, and it's all raised beds. As you can see, they're all in wooden boxes. Skyline Community Garden is in the Skyline neighborhood. It's really cute. Andrew just planted a whole bunch of fruit trees, so you guys should definitely go and see all those fruit trees. I think it's the only garden we have that has fruit trees in it. And there says there are 20 people. I guess there are 20 people that work in that garden. The Heritage House Garden is at Heritage House, so its focus is on retired people and also just low-income people that live in that community. And they have communal and individual plots as well. And they have a lot of people that are really experienced gardeners there, really longtime gardeners. So it's a good place to go for gardening advice. First Presbyterian Community Garden. It's also in Argenta. It's run by the First Presbyterian Church, and they also... They have communal plots and individual plots, and then they also rent out plots to the living affected, which is a group for people living with HIV. So they do a lot on nutrition and food education there, too. Do you want to say anything about their kitchen?
Sure. One exciting thing that Fit to Live was able to be involved in at First Presbyterian Church was the opening of a commercial kitchen. And through our communities, Putting Prevention to Work, Obesity Prevention Grant, we had funding for incentives for people who... In the community that wanted to increase access to healthy foods. And having a community kitchen was top of the list, because you would allow community garden members to come in and process or can their food for use later on in the year. And also, it's actually for rent for young food entrepreneurs that want to start a food
This is... Well, Andrew, I don't really know that much about this garden. Do you want to talk about some?
Sure, I'd love to. I've gotten to address y'all before, but I appreciate the chance to do it again. I'm Andrew Cardy, and I work with Dark Hollow Community Garden. The manager's name is William Burney. We've expanded the garden about 100% since we started this year. It works with the Dark Hollow CDC. There's 19 people involved. It's mostly communal plots. We just got them water, thanks to our community partner, Central Arkansas Water, who we love dearly. And compost, we've had generous compost donations from American Composting. But, yeah, it's a lovely, lovely spot out in Dark Hollow. They had to move sites, and I think they've done just a great job with it so far. Next one? I think that's all of you. All right. Eighth Street Community Garden. The manager's name is Mac Agnew. It's partnered with Eighth Street Missionary Baptist Church, with 10 to 20 people involved, all communal plots. And once again, we're very thankful for our generous donations from American Composting. East Second Street, that's another one of mine. We've expanded that one probably another 50% this year. They are rocking and rolling. I don't know if y'all have ever been out to East Second Street looking around, but with the Bailey Chapel Baptist Church, Derek Easter is the pastor out there, and I'll tell y'all, they really get a lot out of this garden. They've got 10 to 20 people going. It's all communal. They've got a name... Man named Ellsworth Cox out there that does everything, really manages it, and he's got a green thumb, let me tell you. He can grow some things, and I've seen them have potlucks and stuff like that, and they get a lot out of it. James Lawson, Jeanie Baltz, I don't know if y'all have been to the old train station in Sherman Park, but we are kind of expanding a garden that existed out there in coordination previously with Roquan, or Rockin', I don't know how you say it. But they have kids, an after-school program out there, that get to learn how to do some gardening, which they really, really enjoy. That garden, we've probably expanded another 150 to 200% actually. Still going right now, and Miss Jeanie is really, really loving it. Idlewild, it's a very, very new garden, another People Tree project. I don't know if you want to say anything about it, Josh, with Miss Jean. But I don't know if you've got to see some of them. We've got some really lovely signage, which apparently Miss Jean is loving, getting a chance to design out there. But this one's really cool, in Idlewild, over in Park Hill. It's actually in the shape of a house. And they've really done this one right. If y'all get a chance to go over there and look at it, it's kind of an example of how much we've learned doing all these projects, and just from failures and successes, getting to start a brand-new one like this, put it up as... In an extremely short time period and do it this successfully and do everything this right, is really quite something. It's really something to go look at. And it's got 14 people and communal plots, and it's also got donations from American Composting. And as this is the end, I will throw in a little more of my 10 cents. I'm here for just a short while longer, but I've really, really appreciated being able to come and do all this, get to meet your citizens of North Little Rock. It's been quite a pleasure for me. But I really can't stress enough, American Composting is one of y'all's community partners that's now one of ours, who's donated hundreds of yards of compost to these gardens, and it's an extreme monetary donation as well as just support in general. They give them cuts on other products, such as super soil, and building a garden, I can't stress how important that is and what a boon that's been, as well as Central Arkansas Water. Y'all might know that growing something in Arkansas heat in the summer is not possible without water. And Central Arkansas Water has been most generous to come into these garden sites and put in stand pipes that need them to provide water service. And I think Bernadette has some goodie bags for our Central Arkansas Water partners as a thanks.
Mr. Wyndorf, Blake Wyndorf. Appreciate you so much. We're glad to participate. We're certainly glad to participate in this effort, and you guys have set a good example for a community to provide for its citizens, and certainly glad to help out with setting these meters to provide water for the plants. And I'd like to say thank you also for Graham Rich, who couldn't be here tonight, as well as Stephanie Mel, our stewardship coordinator. So thank you so much. We're glad to help.
And just a couple of last throws in there. Y'all might not know, but Fit to Live, with Miss Bernadette here, has taken a unique approach to this gardening, and it's not throwing in a garden and expecting people to do it. It's actually going out to your citizens and supporting them, and allowing their momentum to be the one that creates the gardens. And I think just looking around, and I think it's overdue, but we would love to, I'm sure, invite everyone on a tour sometime soon, but looking around, you can see these gardens that have lasted two or three years, how established they've been, and that's entirely due to this unique approach, I believe.
And all the community partners that have been part of that... Part of the gardening committee, making the decisions.
Absolutely.
Josh, you want to say something?
Yeah. I wanted to reiterate what Andrew said about American Composting and Central Arkansas Water, but also to say thank you to Fit to Live, Bernadette, and I cannot... I cannot emphasize enough how important these Garden Corps members are to all of these projects. They've taken the projects that I've been involved with, they've taken them forward two, three, maybe even four years, and saved us a lot of backache and sunburn and sweat, and we're extremely grateful to both of you. But in addition, I want to say thank you to all of you, because it's been the Streets Department, it's been Parks and Recreation, it's been Public Works. I mean, just everyone in the city has pitched in to make this happen, whether it be a bulldozer or a dump truck, a tractor, whatever it is. And I don't... I just... I'm very, very proud, and I'm very, very thankful. So thank you all very much.
Thank you all.
We are very proud also, you know, two years ago, I don't know that I would have imagined that we would have had 19 gardens. And I'd like, this time next year, Bernadette, to have 30. Let's shoot for 30. Yeah. Thank you all very much. You've worked very hard. We're very proud of the outcome of our community gardens. So with that, I'm going to adjourn this meeting, and Ms. Whitby, you want to make your announcements?
Yes. If anyone wants to speak at any time during this meeting, you need to come sign in now. If you want to speak at the end of the meeting, fill out the three-by-five card. If you want to speak on council legislation, fill out the clipboard.
If I could get everyone, council members, to please have their seats.
Have a Memorial Day, too, the day.
And you too.
I guess she didn't give me one. She figured I wouldn't give her the answer.
You get both of them.
So we have a...
You ready, Joe?
All right. This is not... You'll be... Thank you. Please do.
Okay. We're a little bit late. Ms. Whitby, call me in order.
There, Ross.
Here.
White.
Here.
Robinson.
Here.
Baxter.
Here.
Vouch.
Here.
Hike.
Here.
And Witcher.
Present.
Quorum is present, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Witcher is going to pray and pledge for us.
As we come to you in prayer, we think about our neighbors in Oklahoma and the heartache and the disaster that they're dealing with. We think of... We pray that you bless those from other parts of the country who have come to help them and minister to their needs and their spirits and their souls. We pray for our men and women who are in our services, their families that support them on a daily basis, as we had recognized them yesterday. Thank you for their service, and we ask for your guidance as we participate in our meeting tonight. I name your prayer. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Second. Ms. Whitby.
Hey, that's on the approval of the minutes from May 13 and the special meeting.
Yes, ma'am.
That was held on May 21. Ross.
Yes.
White.
Here.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Vouch.
Yes.
of cubic yards of compost to city-sponsored community gardens, and their high-quality product has contributed immensely to the overall success of the gardens they have sponsored. As a gardening community, we sincerely appreciate having such a wonderful community partner and sponsor as American Composting. It is also a blessing to see local businesses give back and get involved in their community. American Composting Incorporated is a shining example of this and as such should be recognized duly. Kindness regards, and this is signed by the community garden members from the various community gardens.
Thank you.
Motion? Move to accept and file?
Second.
On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Vouch?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Communication number one, just by title, it's Outdoor Storage Task Force. Officer Russ Elrod will represent code enforcement and Presley Melton will represent Ward Four.
We need to, I don't know if you can pull a communication, but the one on Presley Melton, Presley is not going to be able to serve on that. Ward Four is going to be, they're going to point someone else.
Okay.
So, Mayor, I've communicated, talked to Alderman woman Ross about that and Alderman Witcher and I are working diligently to have her name within the next day or two.
Okay. Number, we have a motion.
Second.
On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Vouch?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Number three?
Could you read it?
By title or read?
Could you read it, please?
This is a letter to the North Little Rock City Council dated May 21, 2013. The North Little Rock Community Garden Groups and the Fit to Live Office would like to ask you to formally recognize American Composting Incorporated for its extraordinary support of the North Little Rock Community Gardening Program. Throughout the last year alone, American Composting has graciously donated hundreds of cubic yards of compost to city-sponsored community gardens, and their high-quality product has contributed immensely to the overall success of the gardens they have sponsored. As a gardening community, we sincerely appreciate having such a wonderful community partner and sponsor as American Composting. It is also a blessing to see local businesses give back and get involved in their community. American Composting Incorporated is a shining example of this and as such should be recognized duly. Kindness regards, and this is signed by the community garden members from the various community gardens.
Thank you.
Motion? Move to accept and file?
Second.
On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Vouch?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Number five?
Please read it.
A letter to Mayor Joe Smith. Dear Mayor Smith, I am sure you already know that North Little Rock has an amazing staff for our trash and garbage pickup. They're incomparable. My garbage, trash, and yard waste just disappear with no trace. I can count on them to be on time and on the scheduled day. People on the trucks are friendly and focused and always careful when walkers are present. We are so fortunate to have such an efficient and affordable utility. Please pass this on. Sincerely, Sarah Caroline McAllister, formerly of Maple Street and now on Chippewa Drive.
Mayor, before I formally move that we accept and file, I just want to echo my dittos about this letter. I know Mr. Ford and I have had a few conversations on the telephone in the last few days, weeks, and months, and I just want to congratulate him on the outstanding job that his department does and is doing down there at sanitation. I know they have some challenges on a daily and almost, and a weekly basis, but Harold seems to be winning those battles and doing a good job for us. So, thank you, Harold. Now I move that we second and accept and file.
Second.
And I agree, Harold, be sure and pass that along to your employees. Thank you. Ms. Whitby?
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Vouch?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Number five?
Please read it.
A letter to Mayor Joe Smith. Dear Mayor Smith, I am sure you already know that North Little Rock has an amazing staff for our trash and garbage pickup. They're incomparable. My garbage, trash, and yard waste just disappear with no trace. I can count on them to be on time and on the scheduled day. People on the trucks are friendly and focused and always careful when walkers are present. We are so fortunate to have such an efficient and affordable utility. Please pass this on. Sincerely, Sarah Caroline McAllister, formerly of Maple Street and now on Chippewa Drive.
Mayor, before I formally move that we accept and file, I just want to echo my dittos about this letter. I know Mr. Ford and I have had a few conversations on the telephone in the last few days, weeks, and months, and I just want to congratulate him on the outstanding job that his department does and is doing down there at sanitation. I know they have some challenges on a daily and almost, and a weekly basis, but Harold seems to be winning those battles and doing a good job for us. So, thank you, Harold. Now I move that we second and accept and file.
Second.
And I agree, Harold, be sure and pass that along to your employees. Thank you. Ms. Whitby?
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Vouch?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Number five?
Please read it.
A letter to Mayor Joe Smith. Dear Mayor Smith, I am sure you already know that North Little Rock has an amazing staff for our trash and garbage pickup. They're incomparable. My garbage, trash, and yard waste just disappear with no trace. I can count on them to be on time and on the scheduled day. People on the trucks are friendly and focused and always careful when walkers are present. We are so fortunate to have such an efficient and affordable utility. Please pass this on. Sincerely, Sarah Caroline McAllister, formerly of Maple Street and now on Chippewa Drive.
Mayor, before I formally move that we accept and file, I just want to echo my dittos about this letter. I know Mr. Ford and I have had a few conversations on the telephone in the last few days, weeks, and months, and I just want to congratulate him on the outstanding job that his department does and is doing down there at sanitation. I know they have some challenges on a daily and almost, and a weekly basis, but Harold seems to be winning those battles and doing a good job for us. So, thank you, Harold. Now I move that we second and accept and file.
Second.
And I agree, Harold, be sure and pass that along to your employees. Thank you. Ms. Whitby?
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Vouch?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Number five?
Please read it.
A letter to Mayor Joe Smith. Dear Mayor Smith, I am sure you already know that North Little Rock has an amazing staff for our trash and garbage pickup. They're incomparable. My garbage, trash, and yard waste just disappear with no trace. I can count on them to be on time and on the scheduled day. People on the trucks are friendly and focused and always careful when walkers are present. We are so fortunate to have such an efficient and affordable utility. Please pass this on. Sincerely, Sarah Caroline McAllister, formerly of Maple Street and now on Chippewa Drive.
Mayor, before I formally move that we accept and file, I just want to echo my dittos about this letter. I know Mr. Ford and I have had a few conversations on the telephone in the last few days, weeks, and months, and I just want to congratulate him on the outstanding job that his department does and is doing down there at sanitation. I know they have some challenges on a daily and almost, and a weekly basis, but Harold seems to be winning those battles and doing a good job for us. So, thank you, Harold. Now I move that we second and accept and file.
Second.
And I agree, Harold, be sure and pass that along to your employees. Thank you. Ms. Whitby?
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Vouch?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Number five?
Please read it.
A letter to Mayor Joe Smith. Dear Mayor Smith, I am sure you already know that North Little Rock has an amazing staff for our trash and garbage pickup. They're incomparable. My garbage, trash, and yard waste just disappear with no trace. I can count on them to be on time and on the scheduled day. People on the trucks are friendly and focused and always careful when walkers are present. We are so fortunate to have such an efficient and affordable utility. Please pass this on. Sincerely, Sarah Caroline McAllister, formerly of Maple Street and now on Chippewa Drive.
Mayor, before I formally move that we accept and file, I just want to echo my dittos about this letter. I know Mr. Ford and I have had a few conversations on the telephone in the last few days, weeks, and months, and I just want to congratulate him on the outstanding job that his department does and is doing down there at sanitation. I know they have some challenges on a daily and almost, and a weekly basis, but Harold seems to be winning those battles and doing a good job for us. So, thank you, Harold. Now I move that we second and accept and file.
Second.
And I agree, Harold, be sure and pass that along to your employees. Thank you. Ms. Whitby?
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Vouch?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Number five?
Please read it.
A letter to Mayor Joe Smith. Dear Mayor Smith, I am sure you already know that North Little Rock has an amazing staff for our trash and garbage pickup. They're incomparable. My garbage, trash, and yard waste just disappear with no trace. I can count on them to be on time and on the scheduled day. People on the trucks are friendly and focused and always careful when walkers are present. We are so fortunate to have such an efficient and affordable utility. Please pass this on. Sincerely, Sarah Caroline McAllister, formerly of Maple Street and now on Chippewa Drive.
Motion? It's moved.
Second. On the motion.
Ross?
No.
White?
No.
Robinson?
No.
Baxter?
Yes.
Vouch?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Motion failed?
Thank you. Ms. Obar, I'm sorry, the motion failed, so you will have, your next option, I believe, would be to hire an attorney and take it to district court.
Take it to district court?
Or circuit court.
Circuit court.
Circuit court.
Okay, or I can build. I can build a home.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
You bet. Okay, let's go on to the consent agenda. Anybody want to pull anything out of consent agenda? Ms. Robinson?
We have some amendments for 1393, 1394, and 1395.
Well, I guess we better pull those out.
Am I right, Mr. City Attorney?
Ms. Ross?
We may just want to pull them all because I want to pull the R1396. Well, I guess R1392 is okay.
Okay, let's just do one at a time then. Ms. Whitby?
The first one is R1392. Mayor Smith?
Please call it.
A resolution authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to enter into an agreement with Arkansas Arts Center.
Motion?
It's moved.
Second? Second. On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Vouch?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Number five?
Please read it.
A letter to Mayor Joe Smith. Dear Mayor Smith, I am sure you already know that North Little Rock has an amazing staff for our trash and garbage pickup. They're incomparable. My garbage, trash, and yard waste just disappear with no trace. I can count on them to be on time and on the scheduled day. People on the trucks are friendly and focused and always careful when walkers are present. We are so fortunate to have such an efficient and affordable utility. Please pass this on. Sincerely, Sarah Caroline McAllister, formerly of Maple Street and now on Chippewa Drive.
Motion? It's moved.
Second?
Second.
On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Vouch?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Number five?
Please read it.
A letter to Mayor Joe Smith. Dear Mayor Smith, I am sure you already know that North Little Rock has an amazing staff for our trash and garbage pickup. They're incomparable. My garbage, trash, and yard waste just disappear with no trace. I can count on them to be on time and on the scheduled day. People on the trucks are friendly and focused and always careful when walkers are present. We are so fortunate to have such an efficient and affordable utility. Please pass this on. Sincerely, Sarah Caroline McAllister, formerly of Maple Street and now on Chippewa Drive.
Mayor, before I formally move that we accept and file, I just want to echo my dittos about this letter. I know Mr. Ford and I have had a few conversations on the telephone in the last few days, weeks, and months, and I just want to congratulate him on the outstanding job that his department does and is doing down there at sanitation. I know they have some challenges on a daily and almost, and a weekly basis, but Harold seems to be winning those battles and doing a good job for us. So, thank you, Harold. Now I move that we second and accept and file.
Second.
And I agree, Harold, be sure and pass that along to your employees. Thank you. Ms. Whitby?
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Vouch?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Number five?
Please read it.
A letter to Mayor Joe Smith.
Dear Mayor Smith, I am sure you already know that North Little Rock has an amazing staff for our trash and garbage pickup. They're incomparable. My garbage, trash, and yard waste just disappear with no trace. I can count on them to be on time and on the scheduled day. People on the trucks are friendly and focused and always careful when walkers are present. We are so fortunate to have such an efficient and affordable utility. Please pass this on. Sincerely, Sarah Caroline McAllister, formerly of Maple Street and now on Chippewa Drive.
Motion? It's moved.
Second. On the motion.
Ross?
No.
White?
No.
Robinson?
No.
Baxter?
No.
Vouch?
No.
Height?
No.
And Witcher?
No.
Motion failed?
Thank you. Ms. Obar, I'm sorry, the motion failed, so you will have, your next option, I believe, would be to hire an attorney and take it to district court.
Take it to district court?
Or circuit court.
Circuit court.
Circuit court.
Okay, or I can build. I can build a home.
Yes, ma'am. Well, I guess we better pull those out.
Am I right, Mr. City Attorney?
Ms. Ross?
We may just want to pull them all because I want to pull the R thirteen ninety-six. Well, I guess R thirteen ninety-two is okay.
Okay. Let's just do one at a time then. Ms. Whitby?
The first one is R thirteen ninety-two, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
A resolution authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to enter into an agreement with Arkansas Arts Center.
Motion?
It's moved.
Second?
Second.
On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Fauch?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
R thirteen ninety-three, Mayor Smith.
Ninety-three is Robinson Taylor.
Oh, I'm sorry. Robinson and Taylor.
All right.
Okay. Please call. I'm trying to find my notes for the amendment. For this is something that the city attorney's office said that we needed to do with the community gardens.
Yes, ma'am. I believe there was some discussion about having some consideration on both sides in order for it to be a binding agreement. And I believe in section one, it was put in there that it would be a hundred dollars consideration paid on behalf of the city. So that is already in there, if that's your concern.
Okay, then. Just making sure.
Okay. Do you want to call it then?
Please call it. Wait.
A resolution renewing the community gardens license agreement with the First Presbyterian Church and authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to enter into an agreement for community garden license agreement with the First Presbyterian Church.
Do I have a motion?
It's a move.
Ms. Ross?
I thought that, you know, because I...when I looked at this, the hundred dollars seemed extremely high to me because I know that...I know that you do need to have a dollar amount, you know, but a hundred dollars to me seems extremely high. I think twenty-five dollar amount would be sufficient, if that's okay. I think that was probably what we were looking for. So...
Did we have a second? Did we get a second?
Second.
Now, you want to amend that to twenty-five?
That's fine with me. It's Alderman Robinson's, but if that's okay with her, I would like to.
Could I make a suggestion? Okay, since these are community projects, you know, one of the things that we could do is just say a dollar and other good and valuable considerations.
There's nothing legally wrong with that. It's up to the council.
Ms. Ross?
Yeah.
I've discussed this with Mr. Carter. He may want to come up here.
The concern I had whenever...and honestly, this was kind of a Tuesday putting legislation together to get it filed and reviewing agreements, and our resolutions that we were providing to city council were just an extension of a lease term without consideration, which is nothing more than a gift and it's an unenforceable contract. There has to be consideration on both sides of an agreement for an agreement to be enforceable. That's contracts one oh one. So I placed consideration in the agreement. It can be modified, certainly if you wanted a different dollar value in there. Sometimes Alderman Witcher may be showing his age by one dollar and other good and valuable consideration because that's usually more like twenty-five these days, and they put that in. Couldn't pass that up.
Don't tell my wife, would you?
But certainly, if you wanted to make that amendment, that would be within the discretion of city council. There just must be consideration from our side of the agreement for it to be enforceable.
Thank you. Do I have a second on the amendment?
Some of...I mean, second.
Okay.
Well, now, we had a first and a second on the main motion. We did not have a first on the amendment.
All right. Ms. Ross made the amendment? Ms. Robinson made the amendment?
Okay.
I said move that we amended to say twenty-five dollars.
Okay. Second by Ms. White. On the motion to amend.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Fauch?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes. Yes.
On the motion?
Motion has amended.
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 Okay. You got it?
The first and that was the second?
Yeah.
Okay.
Witcher, Baxter, okay?
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Fauch?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
R thirteen ninety-four, Alderman Robinson and Taylor?
Please call it.
A resolution renewing the community garden license agreement with the Eighth Street Missionary Baptist Church and authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to enter into a community garden license agreement with the Eighth Street Missionary Baptist Church.
We'd like for the amendment to be the same, the twenty-five dollars.
Have a second?
Second.
On the motion to amend?
On the motion to amend, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Fauch?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Right of motion?
Move for adoption is amended.
Second.
The motion to adopt is amended. Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Fauch?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
R thirteen ninety-five, Alderman Robinson?
Please call it.
A resolution renewing community garden license agreement with the Aaron Redden for the One Inc. and authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to enter into a community garden license agreement with Aaron Redden for the One Inc.
Okay. We'd like to amend that for to say twenty-five dollars as well.
Second.
Well, Mr. Witcher seconded. On the motion to amend?
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Fauch?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes. Move for adoption is amended.
Second.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Fauch?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
R thirteen ninety-six, Alderman Witcher and White?
Yeah, we'd like to call that, but we would also like to give the other council members an opportunity to add their names to it.
I would like to add mine because it was supposed to be on there in the first place.
Yeah. And that's my fault, Ms. Ross.
Looks like we're adding everyone?
Everyone.
Ms. Whitby, was it?
Very good. Thank y'all.
Okay.
Are we adding Alderman Taylor in his absence?
Go ahead. I'll speak to him.
Didn't want him to feel left out.
Did you get me?
Yes, I got you all.
A resolution authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to enter into an agreement with Butterfly Community.
Move for adoption. Second.
Any discussion on the motion?
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Fauch?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
R thirteen ninety-seven, Mayor Smith?
Please call it.
A resolution certifying the amount of a cleanup lien to be filed with the Pulaski County Tax Collector against certain real property located at four oh six and a half West Fifth Street in the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas.
Move for adoption.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Call public hearing. Anyone here to speak on four oh six and a half West Fifth?
Fifteenth.
Is it West Fifth or West Fifteenth?
Fifth.
Fifth.
West Fifth?
It's the cleanup lien, not the condemnation.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry.
Okay. Seeing none, close the public hearing. On the motion?
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Fauch?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
R thirteen ninety-eight, Mayor Smith?
Please call it.
A resolution approving amounts of liens to be certified to the Pulaski County Tax Collector against certain real properties in the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas as a result of grass-cutting expenses and abatement of other nuisances.
Move for adoption.
Second.
A question. Is this just a blanket? I mean, I don't see any particular piece of property on this.
They're listed on the back, exhibit A.
It's what?
They're listed in exhibit A.
Six, nine, twelve, fifteen, fifteen.
Okay. We have motion and a second. And we're going to come to a public hearing. Anyone wishing to address a public hearing on all these that are attached on exhibit A? Seeing none, close the public hearing. On the motion?
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Fauch?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
R thirteen ninety-nine, Mayor Smith?
Please call it.
A resolution declaring certain buildings, houses, and other structures located at thirteen seventeen West Fifteenth Street in the city of North Little Rock to constitute a public nuisance and condemning said structures, providing a period of time for property owner to abate said nuisance.
Motion? Do I have a motion?
Move for adoption.
Second?
Second.
Call public hearing on thirteen seventeen West Fifteenth, thirteen seventeen West Fifteenth. Seeing none, close the public hearing. On the motion?
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Fauch?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
R thirteen one hundred, Mayor Smith?
Please call it.
A resolution declaring certain buildings, houses, and other structures located at fifty-two oh six Schaefer Street in the city of North Little Rock to constitute a public nuisance and condemning said structures, providing a period of time for property owner to abate said nuisance.
And it's Share Street?
Share.
Motion? Do I have a motion?
It's a move.
Second? Call public hearing. Did you get that second, Ms. Whitby?
Yes.
Seeing fifty-two oh eight Share. Anyone here to speak on fifty-two oh eight Share? Seeing none? I'm sorry. You're right, fifty-two oh six. Seeing none, close the public hearing. On the motion?
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Fauch?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
R thirteen one oh one, Mayor Smith?
Please call it.
A resolution declaring certain buildings, houses, and other structures located at one twenty-eight Marvin Street in the city of North Little Rock to constitute a public nuisance and condemning said structures, providing a period of time for the property owner to abate said nuisance.
Do I have a motion?
It's a move.
It's a move.
Second.
And a second. Call public hearing. Mr. McGowan, you talked about this a minute ago. You certainly have the opportunity to speak again if you want to, or we can just remember what you said earlier. Come to the microphone, please. You need to make a comment. We can't answer questions, but let's see what your question is here.
Okay. I had a...I...yes, I haven't gotten it tore down because, like I said, I'm broke. But as far as I had a...I had a gentleman that is known throughout the city for renting houses. Two weeks ago, go and look at purchasing the home. He said it's too far gone for him, you know, but that was the only reason I have not started tearing on it. But actually, in the last week, I did a lot of damage tearing it up during the weekend, this last weekend. I don't have the demolitions permit because I do ten and twelve-hour days. I got off at five o'clock, rushed on to clean up because I didn't want to disgrace you with how bad I look.
Well, we appreciate you coming down here to visit with us. You will have time after the vote tonight to complete the demolition of it. So you might want to get with code enforcement and let them know, and there's like a thirty-day period.
Okay. And the other...the question I had is, the gentleman told me that Ms. McHenry, I believe, the code officer, told him that she would...if y'all tore the pla...the structure down, that my storage building would go too. I own two lots, one twenty-eight and one thirty. They're right next to each other. The storage building is on one thirty. Is it safe? I plan on moving it. I've been...I emptied it out two weeks ago.
I would assume Mr. Wadley's here with the code enforcement. If he'll just...when we...after we vote, you step outside, he'll meet you out there and y'all can talk about it. There he is. Okay. Close the public hearing. On the motion?
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Fauch?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Ordinances oh thirteen forty-seven, Mayor Smith?
Please call it.
First reading. An ordinance amending ordinance number seventy-five oh seven, adopting an amended land use map and amended planning area extraterritorial jurisdiction map for the city of North Little Rock comprehensive land use plan.
I move to suspend all readings. Go to the third reading.
Do I have a motion?
Second.
Question.
Yes.
Should we have a public hearing on this?
Yes.
It's state law.
Yes.
Yes.
You want me to expound on that?
No, yeah.
Robert?
We advertise and held public hearings at Planning Commission. Spare you the process. But this goes into effect July the first. We're a little month ahead of the time. State law restricted cities back to two miles, and we were...we've had planning for five miles. We're bringing that into two miles. This map reflects that.
So what's going to happen, whether we have a plan...have a public hearing or not, right?
Well, we need it here to state law, so this plan adheres to state law.
Okay. Mr. Baxter?
Mr. Boles, I remember, I guess about a year ago, when we were looking at the...like you mentioned earlier, the zoning out in Crystal Hill.
Yep.
We really didn't come to any kind of agreement on that, and we sent that back to the Planning Commission. Now that we've pulled it back within two miles, can we anticipate seeing that perhaps sometime soon?
I can come back to you whenever you're ready. We...it's in the two-mile territory, but it will require quite a bit of work in the Crystal Hill area.
Okay.
So I think that's been the issue is if you adopt it, you have to apply the rules and force in that area.
All right. Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion to suspend all readings. Do I have a second?
Second.
On the motion to suspend readings?
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Fauch?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes. Move for adoption.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. We've suspended readings. On the motion?
And this is the motion to adopt. Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Fauch?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
On the emergency, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Fauch?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Oh thirteen forty-eight, Alderman Ross and White?
Please call it.
An ordinance reclassifying certain property located at twenty-five oh four McCain Boulevard in the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas from C one and R four to a C three classification by amending ordinance number seventy-six ninety-seven of the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas, adopting an amended land use plan for this subject property.
First reading.
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
R-1393, Mayor Smith?
Please call it.
First reading, an ordinance reclassifying certain property located at 2504 McCain Boulevard in the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas, from C1 and R4 to a C3 classification by amending ordinance number 7697 of the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas, adopting an amended land use plan for this subject property.
First reading.
Move to suspend all rule, whatever.
All readings?
Suspend all readings.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the motion?
On the motion, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Fauch?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
On the emergency, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Fauch?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
On the emergency, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Fauch?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Concludes new business.
Council members comment? Ms. White?
I've got something. Somebody else wants to go?
Ms. Robinson?
I would like for Mike Smith or someone from his office to come to the mic.
Chris?
Chris.
And, and, and Chris, you can tell me probably in two minutes or one. Douglas Avenue in Dixie addition. Can you kind of give me a quick update or what's going on with that?
Sure. That is a trail in bank stabilization project around on the west side of Conley Park. It is a community development agency project funded.[1207.33]